I call order the agenda of the Belton City Council Work Session, a regular meeting, March 12th, 2019. So we're calling the work session to order. Items for you in discussion, Park Department Annual Report. Who's up?
Well, I'm sitting here looking out at the Park Department staff, and so I think our Board Chair, Terry Ward, is going to come to the podium and speak tonight about the Park Department.
You gonna tell us who all is here tonight?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Huh?
Do you guys hear me? Is it on?
There we go.
Councilwoman Peake helps with all my technology, too.
Terry Ward, Park Board President, with me this evening. We have our Director, Brian Welborn, Assistant Director, Vanda Meehan, and looks like Mike Miller with the Park Board. I'll try to keep this brief. First, I want to thank Mayor Davis and the City Council for the opportunity to report on the state of our parks and rec department. To echo a sentiment that I've heard many times, our parks are outstanding, and it's one of the city's greatest assets. This past year has been another busy and successful year for the Belton Parks. It's been a year of change. We are fortunate to have hired a new director, Brian Welborn, which I just introduced last April. While he inherited the budget for this fiscal year, he and the staff worked hard to finish with an anticipated surplus of just under $100,000. This is quite an accomplishment considering our budget from some previous years. This is not because we had excess revenues. It's because the staff has worked extremely hard keeping our expenses in check. In addition, staff was able to make unbudgeted repairs totaling more than $75,000 throughout the parks using only our operating fund. In addition to Brian, we have also hired a new Recreation Manager, Kevin Goodman, and Aquatics Manager, Candace Roller, and we're excited about what they both will bring to their respective departments. The High Blue Wellness Center is now 19-years-old. That's amazing. Time flies when you're having fun, I guess. It continues to hold its own in a market that offers five workout facilities as competition. High Blue is more than a gym. It's a community that offers more than 90 aerobic classes that are free with a membership, as well as a garage gym, state-of-the-art fitness equipment, access to the expertise of both certified personal trainers and wellness coaches, and not to mention the free coffee every morning, a place to sit and visit with members of the High Blue family. We also just purchased new treadmills along with new stair climbers and are expecting to make big change in the kinesis room, and we'll be announcing news on this expansion very soon. Now, I'd like to take a moment and mention some other highlights from the past year. Per the city charter, the department adopted a new employee manual that is aligned with city policies. We also have updated our code of conduct, rules, and regulations for members at the High Blue Wellness Center in an effort to establish consistency within our facility management practices. Memorial Park are anchored to our park system. It was a site for six free community events this past summer, including Summer Fest, Oktoberfest, the Easter Egg Hunt, and a few more. I highly encourage any of you that have not been to these family fun events to attend. This staff really knows how to put a first-class event together. We anticipate adding a couple new events this year, and we will announce those details as it become complete. Memorial Station, it continues to be a focal point of the community as a host site of private rentals, corporate meetings, summer camp, community events, and covering 170 calendar days in 2018. Program participation is up in our recreation leagues compared to last March, and we have revamped our soccer program. Youth soccer is now offered Recreation League play only. These youth sports are important to our community. These programs end up funneling into our schools, and we see kids that started in our rec leagues winning conference champions in high school. We recently renewed our contract with Midwest Sports Production. MSP is an affiliate of U-SAA, and they are scheduled and slated to host 25 sanctioned baseball and softball tournament weekends at Markey Park. They start playing later this month, and they will continue until mid-November. The partnership is a huge boost to our economy. Out-of-town teams participating in these events are staying in our hotels, they're eating in our restaurants, and they're shopping in our stores. About a year ago, we presented to the council, actually about a year and a half ago, we presented to the council a study showing a $5 million economic impact from this partnership. That's why it's such a big deal to the parks and the city. This fall, I actually had a lady tell me she was going to the dog park and couldn't find a place to park, and I thought to myself, "That's a good problem to have. We have too many people in our park." We were presented the American, no, we were presented the Award of Excellence from the Chamber of Commerce for providing outstanding services in the community, an award that was well-deserved for an outstanding staff, and we thank the Chamber for this recognition. Our greenhouse allows us to grow our own plants for the beautification of our eight city parks, as well as City Hall Annex, City Hall, Main Street, Medians, and the roundabouts. We also grow and maintain a tree farm at Markey Park. We have over 2,000 trees to be transplanted to public property throughout the city. We have six hiking trails that we maintain, Wallace Park, Markey Park, Cleveland Lake, Memorial Park, Somerset Park, and Oil Creek. These trails are used daily as our citizens are making them part of their exercise routines. Most of us have heard about the Sloan-Tribby Log Cabin Project, which has very historic ties to this area and has ties to the Civil War. The cabin is currently delivered and stored at Memorial Park. This exciting project is on hold pending approval of the Friends of the Park 501(c)(3) organization that would be critical in fundraising for its resurrection. The foundation has been approved, and now we're waiting on the state of Missouri to prove the tax-exempt status of the foundation. We anticipate the cabin making its home in the Memorial Park in 2020. In summary, Belton Parks continue to be a regional destination place, whether it's the High Blue or one of our parks. The staff is dedicated in offering quality programs, recreation opportunities at affordable prices. We appreciate the efforts of the park staff and volunteers who continue to make this a first-class Parks and Rec Department for the city of Belton. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain any questions or comments.
Well, I'd like to talk first, Terry, about today's event at Memorial Station. I know that several people in the room here were there today. We had a big developer in North Point that's doing the Southview Commerce, which was the old Southview Golf Course, and it was packed. It was a full house, and it was spectacular, and it was, it's the number-one amenity, I think, in Cass County right now for these kinds of events. And I hear everybody talking about and give nothing but praise to our parks and staff, and we have done a great job of having a staff that's very cooperative. And the good news for me is that I don't hear any problems at the park at all. And I say, "Park? Is there something wrong?" I mean, we don't have any problems at all, and you all do a great job. Brian's done a great job in the turnover. Vanda, we've got a good park board and very cognizant of financial needs and staying within the boundaries. And again, I consider, and I think most of us consider it, the number-one amenity in our city is our parks. They're beautiful.
I agree.
And you can see the thumbprint all over the city when you look at all the, like the roundabouts, when they get to those, when we get through with storms and things and quit raining. But it's everywhere, the thumbprint of our parks, and they are great partners for everybody in our city. They had a big display today on the overhead. They were showing all these different events that they'd had all year long, and they kept rolling it, and every time I'd look at it, I'd see something different that I didn't see before, and I'm going, "Wowza." 171 days.
Yes.
That we had events at the Memorial Station.
Absolutely.
And again, some of these are just, people that don't know about them, it's their loss, because these summer events are spectacular on the lawn.
Yeah, it's done with a lot of class.
To have it out on the lawn, it's just a wonderful time. Well, you got anything to inject on this?
Yeah, I would just correlate to what the mayor's saying and just say kudos to the staff. Brian's just done a phenomenal job, and Vanda, whenever we have a program, staff's always right there and willing to jump right in and help. And cleared in to the Mayor's Christmas Tree event this last year when it was unfortunately vandalized, and we had, Kevin was out there and up on the bucket truck and helping decorate and just seeing the community come together. And it just epitomizes what our parks are for, and they're just a gathering place and a great community location.
You know, I never thought of that until you just said it about vandalized. I'd never thought about that until, I guess that's a new term there. That's interesting. Well, we appreciate everything you've done, and you deserve all kinds of kudos. You've done a great job, and I think the staff is really pleased working with you, and a big step for our city that we have this kind of a working partnership and relationship, which we've needed for a long, long time, so we want to thank you. Any questions anybody has this evening or comments? Park liaison, you have anything? You work with them all the time. What do you think?
No, I think they've had excellent events.
Thank you. They've had excellent events this year. I've had a lot of fun participating in a few of them. The Halloween one was super fun. I look forward to participating in the Easter Egg one this year now that I have a little one that I can drag out there and have an excuse to collect candy. So it's been my pleasure to serve with you all.
Good stuff. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Wow. Anything else on the parks, our annual report? You got anything else? How about we adjourn the work session, and now I'm going to call the regular meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to have Councilman Finn lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we do the roll call, I'd like for, and I'm going to start doing this a lot, anybody that's a veteran, would you stand up today, please? I saw this somewhere recently that you should have your veterans stand up at meetings, every chance you get, so people know who they are. Stand up, please. Get up there. There you go.
Charlie is.
There's our veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Here.
Councilman Trutzell.
Here.
Councilman Lathrippe.
Here.
Councilman Savage. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Peake.
Here.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Here.
Councilman Finn.
Here.
Councilman McPherson.
Here.
Mayor Davis.
Here. Interesting day. Okay. Consent agenda. One motion, non-debatable, to prove the recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item be taken from consent agenda for discussion in separate action.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Can't scroll fast enough.
Next time, it's personal appearances.
Wow, look at that. Do we have any personal appearances? And the answer's no.
Nope.
Okay. Ordances? No, just kidding. Police Department Presentations of 2018 Departmental Awards. You're up, Steve. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. Every year, the police department employees select two to represent them for the year and to recognize them for outstanding service to the department. We recognize a civilian employee of the year and a police officer of the year. I'd like to call Elizabeth Crowe forward, and Leslie, if you will come up to. Elizabeth is our victim advocate, and I prepared a letter for her. She'll also receive a service bar and a plaque. So, Dear Elizabeth, the purpose of this letter is to inform you that your peers and coworkers have selected you as the Belton Police Department Civilian of the Year for 2018. You came to the department in November of 2016, filling the victim advocate position. During your two-plus years here, you have worked to improve and advance services to victims of domestic violence and other crimes. Your pleasant can-do attitude and positive nature have been described in your annual evaluation as a breath of fresh air. You keep up with information about victims, the court, and officers, and make yourself available when needed. Thank you for all that you do. We are lucky to have such a dedicated and caring person in this position. Keep up the good work, and congratulations. Elizabeth Crowe, victim advocate. Ken, the purpose of this letter is to recognize your selection as the Belton Police Department Officer of the Year for 2018. This is the second time that you have been selected to receive this award, the first being in 2014. 2018 was a big year for you. For starters, you got married. You were promoted to corporal, and you assumed the duties of Assistant Shift Commander. During 2018, you also were given a letter of commendation for a citizen contact. You were awarded the Medal of Honor for a violent confrontation, as well as the Meritorious Service Bar for your part in a response to another dangerous incident. Your work ethic is unquestioned, and you always have a team-oriented can-do attitude. Thank you for all you do. Congratulations, and keep up the good work. We recognize these two for special recognition, and they will represent all of our employees for the next year, so. No, we need him to get back in here, Officer Myers. Tell him to get back in here. We'd like to, before we go for our reception, we'd like for you two to stand up here in the middle real quick. Come on up here, right in the middle. Come on up here, officer. Get in here. I can't talk to him like that. Come on up here in the middle. Before we break for our reception, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Belton, you got to know that we really appreciate everything that you all have done, and I think it's a great representation of our police force and our police community, and we're proud of you, and we want to say our thanks in our own special way. So, very thank you. Corporal Hitterman's shift is all hiding back here in the. Guys, come on in, too.
He chose 6:30.
Come on in the door here. That's good stuff.
He's been here eight years in a row for me.
Come on in. Golly. Well, at least we know they like you. That's a good thing. I think it might be the cookies, though. You got to know that. Well, we do need to recognize them, because while Ken does an excellent job, these folks are all on the shift with him, and they are the ones that do all the work, and like Sergeant Hosh, three years in a row. Great team. That's a great team. Someone from his shift has been the Officer of the Year, so. Amen to that. That's good stuff. Let's take a recess, and we'll have a reception out in the hall, and here we go.
Let's start out right now with ordinances. Are you about ready? Okay. Motion approving the final reading of bill number 2019-08.
Present.
Got to present? Did we get a second?
Second, but they didn't. Nobody read it.
What is the ordinance?
She's not here.
Well, but Alexa is.
Oh, okay. You gotta be quick.
We're out of singer.
I'm wondering what was going on.
I do love the efficiency of it, though.
Do we have too many cookies? What happened over there?
Ordnance A, motion approving the final reading of bill number 2019-08, and ordinance approving the proposed fiscal year 2020 city budget as revised, and appropriating funds from the revenues of the city.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Seeing none. Can we have roll call?
Councilman Lathrop?
No.
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak?
Aye.
Councilman Savage? Councilman Tretzel?
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson?
Aye.
Councilman McPherson?
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle?
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. That motion passes. B, a motion approving the final reading of bill number 2019-09.
In ordinance amending sections 42-36, rates inside the city; 42-38, water rates for approved water districts or local governments; 42-39, rates for water consumed outside city; 42-296, sewer system user rates of the Unified Development Code of the City of Belton, Missouri.
Ms. Dan.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none.
Councilwoman Davidson?
Aye.
Councilman Finn?
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop?
Aye.
Councilman Savage is not here. Councilman Tretzel?
Aye.
Councilman McPherson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak?
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle?
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. That motion passes. Resolutions. A, motion approving resolution R. 2019-23.
A resolution approving the service agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for execute time and attendance software.
Present.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. B, a motion approving resolution R. 2019-24.
A resolution authorizing the finance director to enter into an agreement with Commerce Bank for banking services.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. The question that we had before, why, Patrick, is it all right for the finance person to be the one that approves that?
The law authorizes the city council to authorize any city official to execute a contract. So the key is, is the council authorization, not the person then signing the agreement? So you could authorize any of the chiefs to execute something, or Dave to execute something. It just matters that you authorize the execution.
Any other discussion or comments?
Well, I have, I have a couple of questions. Is this something that we've had before? I mean, what they're doing? Because I was reading this hundred pages of stuff they printed out, and they charging us $22,000 to do our banking? Is that what we're doing?
Those are bank fees. And yes, all banks require us to pay fees for banking services. And of the four banks that responded, Commerce responded with the lowest and best proposal. And in addition to having the lowest fees, Commerce Bank also allows us to earn the highest rate of interest on our funds.
I didn't know we paid a bank because they had a fee in there for cash deposits, another fee for checks deposits. I mean, everything that happened, there's a fee for.
Yes, and that is how all banking, all banks are charging now.
Oh, for businesses or cities.
I think the question would be then, he's looking for is, have we done it this way all along?
Yes. The whole reason, I think it was five years ago was the last time we went out for bid. Prior to that, the city was banking with Bank of Belton, and Bank of Belton had not been charging us. They notified the city that they were going to start charging, and that is why we went out for, for bid at that time. And now we have went out for bid again.
I couldn't remember any this much, you know, $22,000 for banking privileges.
Yes.
And.
And, and like I said, Commerce is the lowest.
Well, I didn't, you know, I mean, it had a hundred pages of what all was gonna happen and not happen, and it just got old. So I just wrote down a couple of things to ask, and anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Tretzel?
Is this for a specified period of time, or is it?
We, it is initially three years, and then it's going, we're going to be able to extend it as, as long as we're happy with the services that we're receiving, and, and we feel like we're getting the best possible deal.
Can they increase their fees during that three years?
They will not during those three years.
Thank you.
We have an escape clause?
Yes. We always have an escape clause with banking services at any time we can change depositories.
Any other questions or comments?
I have, I have one other thing that really is. On cash deposits, they charge you 1.8%?
They, they chart.
That's what I figured out.
And the reason is, is because they are required at, because we are public funds, they're required to have FDIC insurance on the first $250,000, and then they have to collateralize all our deposits on top of that. So it costs them money to collateralize and, and make sure that our money is safe. Because the very first objective of public finance is safety of taxpayer dollars. So if, that money has to be collateralized so that if the bank failed overnight, we would make sure that we got all of our money back because that is taxpayer money. So safety first, liquidity second, yield third.
A lot of that I just didn't understand that was written down in there. They're charging for this and this, and, you know, two pages of what they're charging for.
Yes.
Some of it, I didn't have a clue what it was.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. City Council liaison reports. Park?
Yes. Hey, parents. It's time to mark your calendars and get the kids ready for our annual Easter egg hunt. This year's event will be held Saturday, April 13th, in Memorial Park. It's free and open for area youth up to 10 years of age. The event kicks off at 10:00 a.m. with free activities in Memorial Station, including a special appearance by the Easter Bunny. The hunt will begin promptly at 11:00 a.m. on the ball fields, not battlefield, ball fields. It's time to celebrate at our Kids Night Out St. Patrick's Party. We will have the We Ones seeing green. There will be games and a movie. As always, there will be pizza and swimming. Kids Night Out is for kids aged five to 12 years. Cost is $20 for the first family member and 15 for each additional. If registered by Friday, this Friday, March 15th. It's five, it's $5 more at the door. And that's this Saturday. And KCXW April Slam 2019. So this will be Saturday, April 13th, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at High Blue Wellness Center. And this will feature Kansas City Extreme Wrestling. And this is a pro wrestling promotion based out of Kansas City. So that will be a lot of fun, I'm sure. And then the last one is join us for an Under the Sea Princess Party with Ariel on Saturday, June 1st from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at High Blue. It's for three to eight years old. There will be princess crafts, princess treats, and a princess parade, and a visit from Ariel, and more. The cost is $15, and princess attire is welcome. There will be time at the end for photos with Ariel, too. Space is limited, so register early to ensure a spot. That's all I have.
You know, Councilman Finn wrestled.
Is that right?
Maybe you could work him in there somewhere.
I don't think this is the same kind of wrestling.
Oh, okay.
It's a little different.
I saw some pictures on the website. I don't know about that.
How about the Disney character, maybe?
We could probably work something out there. I've got two girls, so yeah, we'll figure it out.
That's a pretty neat project, though.
Yeah.
That'll be a big draw. Because I know my granddaughters go Gaga or that stuff. Public Works, Councilman Tretzel?
We discussed the Adopt a Stream program. It's going to be on March 30th. The streams are kind of an interesting situation. Some of those are within city easements, and some of those back up to private property. So the ones that are city easements are pretty easy to deal with as we try to work, clean things up. But again, when you get into the private ones that runs behind the yards, it becomes a little bit more difficult situation. That's going to be a March 30 cleanup at 8 o'clock. The Rotary, they're there to assist and help, and they are going to adopt the Heimark Lake area. I'd like to talk a little bit about Prop R and Prop S. I'm going to do the roads first because everybody seems like they're concerned about roads. We, you may not be aware, but, and the name may not mean much to you, but I'll kind of tell you what it is. Sandtech, we, the city has enlisted them to run evaluations of our streets. The difference is here is that when we did this before, it was all done by human error, and, not human error, I should say, human evaluation, which can lead to errors. When you have different people evaluating the street, I might say it's a okay street, and somebody else says, no, it's terrible. Sandtech is a company that involves computer-generated evaluation. And so when they drive the street, you might have seen the truck. It's got a bunch of things hanging off of, different sensors hanging off the truck. And they drove the streets, and it comes up with a computer evaluation of what the street is. And then you'll be able to compare it with, without a human involvement in it. 41% of the streets were built in the 1950s, and 88% were built before 2000. Interestingly enough, only 18% of the city has storm sewers, and that might be part of our problem. The ratings are different as far as poor down into different, different areas. But 11% have less, less than four inches of asphalt, and 30% are less than six inch. They also did some core drilling. For those who don't know what core drilling is, they actually go out and drill through the, the asphalt to see how thick the asphalt is and the base below it. Some of those have been kind of astounding. And this is probably the scariest thing about the whole deal. Back in 2005, it was estimated that take care of our city streets is $27.5 million. Today, $45 million. So it becomes rather important that we deal with what we can deal with. We don't have $45 million to fix the streets. We have a possible. We have a possible ballot language here that at least gets somewhat started, and it'll be obviously based on the computer model and what's worst. So I want everybody out there to consider how important that is to all of us that drive the city streets. The other one is a little bit more difficult, because it involves stormwater. And the trouble is with stormwater is that if yours now flooding, you think, oh, doesn't make any difference. All I got to tell you and warn you a little bit is that even when you drop a jar of water on your carpet, how irritated it is, but can you imagine inches or feet in your house? It's a really a difficult deal. The problem is additionally, and that is, that we all create this runoff water. Just because I live high on a hill, and I do live high on a hill, but the water runs down the street, and it runs down, and as it goes down, it collects in there, different areas. And if you're at the bottom of the street, or a low spot in the street, and that water collects there, it's partly my fault. It really is partly my fault, even though I don't live in that house. But I do have a responsibility to those people down there who did live down there. I know in my area, we have several areas that periodically have two and three, four foot of water, and it's not happened just once, it's happened multiple times. And that's just in different parts of town. So again, I would, I would implore you to look at and help those people that obviously can't do it by themselves, and realize that we all contribute to this water problem. And that's what I've got.
We have any more liaison reports? Thank you for that. I guess it's mayor communication time. First thing I have is that we've had a little excitement next door at the museum and the theater, which will be having our play, which opened last weekend, Friday and Saturday nights at 7:30, Sunday matinee at 2:30. That's Neil Simon's play, The Murderous Farce of Four Couples Arrive in the 10th Anniversary Celebration Party for New York's Deputy Mayor. That would be you, Councilwoman Liaison. That would be you in my mind. Only to find the mayor is wounded in bed, and his wife is missing. Figures. Adult themes, not recommended for children, but want to encourage everybody to get out there. Seating is limited, make reservations, and there's a number, but nobody will get that probably, but it's 406-9422 to reserve, and they'll take cash or credit card. So want to make sure that you all know that it is open on Friday, for now anyway, and get there and be a part of it. Then Saturday, want to encourage everybody to get out and look at the 35th, they call it the Little Bit of Ireland, Belton St. Patrick's Day Parade, and I know that some of us are planning on being there. Line up at 4:00 p.m. at Memorial Park. It's supposed to be a nice day, I believe. The weather people are saying, nice day. Is that right, Chief? Okay. Oh, golly, so it's going to rain. Okay. There's a party, though, after the parade, if somebody wants to join, the Paternal Order of Eagles, 310 Maine. They have Cajun food trucks, kettle corn, cotton candy, funnel cakes, and a 50/50 raffle with music for Mr. Rockwood. And again, the success, again, is to the sponsors. I want to say that the sponsors this last year, Mr. Buddy Bronson, Level $500, Wendell Ivors, $250, and a $100 Pot of Gold Level. So want to encourage you to be generous there. And our generosity in 2008, in 18, they donated over $1,500 to the Restoration House, which is a good thing. This year's donation will be going to Belton Welfare. So it's nice Belton fun, it's a family time. Want to encourage everybody to get out there. Now, I do have one thing to read about reasons to come to the Belton St. Patrick's Day Parade this Saturday. The 35th Annual St. Patrick's Parade will be honoring the Leroy Buddy Bronson family. It's our honor to recognize the lives of the three that were killed in two separate fatal drunk driving crashes. In 2011, Diane and Anna, mother and daughter, were hit head-on by a drunk driver, and in 2013, Buddy was mowed down on his motorcycle and killed by, again, a drunk driver. Annette is joined by Tyler and Cody, sons of the deceased, leading the parade as marshals, followed by friends and family members. Their stories have been covered by the media prior, but the parade this year is special for two reasons. One is that Annette Murray, the sister of Diane, has chosen to act rather than not. She has become a central figure in our local MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driver chapter, speaking to other victims and families of the crime of drunk driving, as well serving on impact panels. She has dedicated herself to the memory of her family and to preventing the 100% crime of drunk driving. Two, Diane and Annette's parents will be escorted by an officer driving the MAD Choose Your Ride car. This is the first event since the death of their daughter and granddaughter in 2011 they've felt able to attend. It was always too painful for them. So this parade marks another chapter in the healing process, and a chapter that was crucial to Buddy after the devastating loss of his wife and child, 4th of July morning. I'd like to tell you, folks, how many people I have known personally that have died on the 4th of July with, at the hands of drunk drivers. They were on their way to see him riding, yes, a parade. However, even after that funeral, he did everything he could to stay on the bright side, never lingering for too long in grief, or even asking why. He knew some things just can't be explained, and I can't explain the impact it's had on so many lives in a positive way, including mine. Anyone who has a buddy story is going to make you laugh. I think those three are all laughing together now a lot. So should be a great crowd, so we want to encourage everybody to get out there. So I think it's time for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilman Trutzel referred to, we have the Adopt a Stream event on March 30th, 8:30 a.m. Individuals can park in the Cornerstone Development, Cornerstone Development Parking Lot, and the gathering location will be on the east side of that, that's just off Mullen Road. Again, a reminder, and we'll have these reminders at every meeting until these dates pass. Bulky pickup is coming for Monday pickup, it's on April 5th, and for Tuesday pickup, it's on April 19th. That information is on our website, and.
You heard that, didn't you?
And then wanted to remind that the upcoming meetings are March 26th at 6:00 p.m., April 9th at 6:00 p.m., and April 23rd at 6:00 p.m. At our next meeting, our work session, I'm hoping the only item that will be on there will be Celia presenting some more information that we're gleaning from StanTech as that data comes in. And so that'll be very important, because that'll be one week before the election, and we want to educate as many people as possible as to the information that's available, and the need is real. Thank you, Mayor.
Wow. Okay. So we've got all the dates for all the calendar events. Do we have any other, like, subcommittees that we need to, anybody else coming up right away? I know we're trying to encourage everybody to still go to the neighborhood watch meetings. We had a good one on Friday night. Other business? Any other business this evening? I think we probably ought to slow this down a little bit, because you're not going to go out in the car.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of eating up time since it's raining so hard outside, I would like to give an update on the Belton trivia night that was.
Oh, boy.
Councilman Davidson was there, and she did participate.
How'd she do?
We won.
She did not, she did not win. Team person won, so.
Okay.
We do have the trophy, so.
Oh.
But it was a good time, and money was raised for Belton Cares and the after grad program, so.
So are we saying that a, what degree was yours, UCM, or Central Missouri? Your degree? Our degrees?
My undergrad is Culver Stockton College, and my graduate is Park University. Good old PU.
That's.
Go Pirates.
Aren't you a PU also?
Yeah, as I just said, go Pirates.
Now, is he trying to say that?
I only have one degree, so.
And that's from George Mason.
George Mason.
And so.
Yeah, I need new, I need a new team.
It's not me, it's them.
It's great competition.
It was, it was a team effort.
Well, it's a lot of fun, and it's for a great cause.
They were probably the hardest questions that we've had in all the years that we've, we've been doing it. There were some very difficult questions in there.
We're looking for a committee to investigate the questions, and who had the answers ahead of time.
There was a Harry Potter.
Harry Potter. That's great. Okay. Well, congratulations anyway, and congratulations to Belton Cares. Anything else? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.